You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney, sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at ten AM. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett, Lynn, and all of my friends around the world. It's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County, fifty-eight degrees going up to a high of sixty-six. So it's gonna be pretty nice. It's a little chilly though. I went outside this morning and I was like, ooh, it's a little chilly this morning. But that's okay, that's okay. Listen, today is May first, y'all. Yes, it is May. Time is flying. It is flying. It is totally flying. I was like, oh my goodness, it is May the first. It is May first. It's also called May Day, May Day. It's also Beltane Day, Beltane Day. Kalan Mai, Kalan Mai Day. I have no idea what that is. Sounds cute, but I don't know what it is. Early May Bank Holiday, Early May Bank Holiday. CSS Reboot Day, CSS Reboot Day. Couple Appreciation Day, shout out to all the couples out there. Shout out to all the couples. Executive Coaching Day, shout out to all the executive coaches out there. Frequent Flyer Day, shout out to all the frequent flyers. Global Love Day, celebrate yourself and all humanity through the acts of love and promote peace and unity. That should be every day. It should be, but it's not. We can tell that it's not by the craziness that goes on in the world. Great Lakes Awareness Day, yes, that sounds amazing. A day trip by the lake sounds beautiful. International Doodle Dog Day, Lord, he is so cute. You gotta see him. He's just the cutest little thing. I just wanna hug him. International Sunflower Gorilla Gardening Day. That's a lot. That's a lot to be said right there. Learn to Ride a Bike Day. Speaking of bike, I have a three-wheel bike that's brand new. That I need to just take, I need to go in the garage myself, pull it out the garage and take it to the bike shop so they can fix my tires so I can ride it. Something is wrong with the tires. I can't ride it. I've had it for about two years now, about two years. And I've never ridden a bike. I try to ride it, but something is wrong with the tires. They're not put on correctly. I need to just, I need to just take the bike, cuz otherwise it's gonna sit there forever. Labor and Agriculture Day, it's Keep Kids Alive Drive Twenty-Five. Keep Kids Alive Drive Twenty-Five. Keep everybody alive. National Lay Day, like lay like Hawaiian lay, like that kinda lay, not lay. Lay like Hawaiian lay. Marshall Islands Constitution Day, Melanoma Monday, Melanoma Monday. That's a skin cancer. National Chocolate Parfait Day, that looks delicious. National Blessing Day, National Blessing Day. National Black Barbershop Appreciation Day, shout out to all the black barbershops out there, baby. Shout out to you guys for keeping the men looking great. National Mantra Day, mantra, mantra. What's your mantra? What's your mantra? You know, that's something that you say repeatedly to invoke something in you, whatever that is. National Loyalty Day, National Loyalty Day. National Infertility Survival Day, Survival Day. National Mother Goose Day. Y'all remember Mother Goose? I don't even know if the kids know who Mother Goose is today. They don't know nobody but, uh, Binky, Blippi, and, 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 what's the little, um, the little girl my granddaughter watch all the time. She could care less about Mother Goose. Yeah, I, Mother Goose. Remember Mother Goose had so many children. She lived in a shoe. Mother Goose. National Open Farm Day, National Open Farm Day. National Pure Breed Dog Day, Pure Breed Dog Day. Philippines Labor Day, it's the Philippines Labor Day. New Homeowners Day, shout out to all the new homeowners right there moving in for the first time. National Rotate Your Beer Day. Okay, seriously, then why is that a day? Okay, you drink the beer, right? All right, check this out. Listen to this. It's a little too late for some of y'all though, but for those of you who worked the second shift, it's Phone and Sick Day. The people on the first shift, you missed the memo. You missed the memo, so you're at work already. But the people on the second and third shift, it's Phone and Sick Day. I'm not telling you to phone and sick. I'm telling you that today is May first and that's considered Phone and Sick Day. It's also Save the Rhino Day, Save the Rhino Day. School Principals Day, shout out to all the school principals out there. Worthy Wage Day, Worthy Wage Day. Yeah, more money, more money. Therapeutic Massage Awareness Day, yes, therapeutic massage awareness day. Silver Star Service Banner Day, Silver Star Service Banner Day. Ah, Geanna Bryant, it's her birthday. So Geanna Bryant was, um, that was Kobe's daughter who we lost her in the flight, in the, in the, um, plane crash with her dad. So happy birthday darling, all the way to heaven. It was her birthday. Charlie D., Charlie D. Amalio's birthday. Uh, Kataya, Kat, I can't even, her name is very long. It's Zammo, Zamalod, Zamalod, Zammo, Zam. Her name is Kataya, Katya, 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 Zamolod, Chica Vaz Day. Gee, I messed that all up. She's a drag queen. Shout out to you, girl. You got a lot going on there. Pec's Birthday, Picas, Picas Birthday. Happy Birthday, Picas. She's a TikTok person. All right, that was all your national days and birthdays for the day. Let's keep this train rolling. Get on these harvest goals brought to you by Notre Astral and Michael Thasson. Wanna pick it up like we always do, and that is with Aries. It's a good time for a long way relationships to begin. You can expect changes at your workplace. You're in the mood to spend time with your lover. All right, listen, time with your lover, that's great. Spend some quality time, Aries, that's wonderful. In the meantime, it's about to be some changes up at the job, baby. It's about to be some shakeups going on, so I hope that you're clear of those. I'm just saying. Taurus, you've been in a rut and you need to do something that will help you break that pattern you've fallen into. Your relationship is undergoing some changes. You can make new friends by taking part in social events involving colleagues. All right, you've been in a rut. Do, listen, listen, Taurus, do a self-evaluation and find out why you've been in a rut. Sometimes you just need to stop for a second and be still, so you can hear what God is trying to tell you, right? You just need to stop. Like last week, Monday and Tuesday of last week, I swear, I was just, I was just running on zero. I couldn't figure, I was like, I had a brain fog. I couldn't, I couldn't concentrate. And then Wednesday morning, I woke up, I was gonna do the show. The only thing consistent in my, like, consistent, 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 is this show. I know that says something. I'm just waiting for somebody to come drop a million dollars on the show to support the show. Listen, if you're out there and you're listening to me, I love this show. I need support though. Listen, if you want to support the show, send a million dollars to Noise Media Network. That's where you can send it to. Anyway, I was in a funk last week. Not a funk, but I was like a little bit off, right? And I couldn't really, cuz my to-do list, I kept looking at my to-do list and I just had a lot going on. And every time I looked at it, it pretty much paralyzed me and then I couldn't get anything done. So what I did was on Wednesday, I was like, okay, Audrey, you got to pop out of this thing that you got going on. So what I did Wednesday, I did the show, then I ate my breakfast, which is really like brunch. And then after that, I came here, I looked at my to-do list and I tackled the list. So what I did was I went down the list, I color-coded everything by days, and I was like, okay, what's the most important thing I need to do right now? I put that in yellow means right now. No, that was, it was in green. Green mean go, so like right now. Then I did yellow, then I did pink, and then I did like red or something in blue. So I color-coded the list, and when I did that, it made my life so much more simpler. And I was able to get things done off my list, and I was so proud of myself. Because the bulk of what I needed to do is not gonna happen till this week anyway, because it was all like little things that could wait till like this week, like towards the end of the week at that. So I was so proud of myself, but it took me two days to get to that point. So I said all that, Taurus, to say this, take a minute for yourself, just to focus, refocus, and to see what you need to be doing, so you could pull yourself out of a rut. We, listen, we're human. We get in ruts. It happens. Everybody goes, everybody goes through the ruts. Everybody. If they tell you they don't go through ruts, they're lying. Something puts you in a rut at some point. Gemini, you are best to work behind the scenes on projects that require detail or precision. You need to get out and challenge yourself. You can spend a passionate evening with someone you cherish if you make plans early. Listen, Gemini, make the plans early. I can just envision like a beautiful night on the town. The weather is nice. I see like people sitting on the sidewalk, they're eating, they're talking. I see it. I see it in my, in my mind's eye. Plan it, but you gotta do it early, Gemini. You can't do it at the spur of the moment. It has to be planned out, so both people can be on the same page. Cancer, consider making pleasure trips and participating in entertainment that require energy. Children may cause limitations. This is not the day to be extravagant. All right, consider making pleasure trips or participating in entertainment that will require energy. I don't know what that is for you. You might wanna go hiking or something, Cancer. I don't know. In the meantime, this is not the day to be extravagant. Hold on to the coins. Don't be all flamboyant and out there. It's not today for that. It is not the day for that. All right? Leo, travel could be in order. You may find your nights sleepless due to bad dreams. You may have been trying to do too much, leaving yourself exhausted and open to colds and infections. All right, you're doing too much, Leo. Take a minute. As a matter of fact, take two. You're doing too much. That's why you can't sleep at night. You're having bad dreams. You're not rested. You're doing too much. You're overextended. You need to travel. Take you a short trip and get some, listen, get you some me time. That's what you need. Take a minute for yourself. All right? Virgo, misunderstandings at work could easily lead to your demise. Resist the temptation to gamble. Risks will not be profitable. Get together with friends and do something entertaining, but not too expensive. Listen, Virgo, gambling is not the answer and spending a lot of money is not the answer, because it's not gonna be profitable. Resist the temptation. In the meantime, find you something fun to do that you don't have to spend a lot of money on. There's things out there. There are things out there. You can go to the park and get you an ice cream sundae. And just enjoy that. You know what I'm saying? Just do that. All right, I'm going to a song. I'll be right back after the song to bring you more of the Harvest Goals brought to you by Notre Astral and Michael Thasson. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney bringing you the Daily Harvest Goals brought to you by Notre Astral and Michael Thasson. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. Look before you leap. Secret enemies will be eager to spread rumors about you. You can deal with large institutions or government agencies successfully today. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Look before you leap. Before you take that leap, just know, you need to, you need to be careful. You need to be careful. And on the other side, you got secret enemies spreading rumors about you. Ain't that terrible? They're kicking your back in, and somebody probably know they're smiling in your face all the time. They wanna take your place. Them backstabbers. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Scorpio, money problems will be difficult to deal with if you have a partner. Try to avoid functions that will bring you in contact with those you find difficult to get along with. You can get others to do things for you, but be sure not to overpay them or lend, or lend to them. All right, money problems will be difficult if you have to deal with a partner. All right, I don't know what that means. Here's the thing though. If you're dealing with a partner, maybe you should've talked that out before you, before y'all got into the money part of it. You know what I'm saying? Um, money and partnerships and friendship can be a little sticky, so be careful about that. In the meantime, you can get others to do things for you, but just don't overpay them. I don't even know what that means. And don't lend them money. That too, that too. Sagittarius, you may need a good friend to lean on. You are better off visiting friends or relatives than entertaining at home. Minor health problems may lower your vitality. Look, take, listen, take care of yourself, Sagittarius. You only get one you, right? Minor health problems could lower your vitality. I'm, listen, I be taking all kind of vitamins. I was looking, I looked at a, uh, Steve Harvey got out a new drink. I'm tempted. It's some kind of drink. He say he feels amazing and, you know, that, well, it's like all the other infomercials. Now, does he really feel great? I don't know. But I was tempted to try to drink. I really was. Anything that's gonna make me feel my best. I gotta, I gotta say though, y'all, I lost two pounds. I was excited about that. I noticed somebody, they're saying, two pounds, that's nothing. It is, cuz I was struggling. But here's, I thought I was struggling, but then I sit back and I looked at it, I said, wait a minute, I've only been eating two meals a day. So that, that explains the two, not intentionally, it's just that by the time I eat brunch, I'm not hungry again till dinner time, so I kinda fell off the wagon by eating past nine o'clock. So I told my husband, I gotta get back on the wagon, cuz I kinda fell off, like I would eat cashews at night. I don't eat like heavy stuff, but definitely cashews, um, at night, past nine o'clock. Because I, you know, I kinda fell back into my bad habits, but I said to my husband, I dropped two pounds, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, I gotta stop eating past nine o'clock again. I was doing good. I was doing really, really good. I gotta get better. Anyway, take care of yourself, Sagittarius. Capricorn, you need to put some trust into others. Yes, you gotta trust somebody. I know you, I know it's hard for you to trust Capricorn, but you gotta find, everybody needs at least one person they can trust. Everybody. You should put a little extra effort in at work, travel in pursuit of pleasure and knowledge. Sounds like fun to me. Pleasure and knowledge, the two combinations for me goes well. Yes, they do. I like it. Aquarius, try spending the day catching up on any responsibilities that need to be taken care of. You can expect to face opposition on the home front. Don't hesitate to voice your opinions at a group meeting, however, keep your thoughts to yourself at home. All right, at work, you can say what you need to say. At home, not so much. Not today. Maybe another day that gives you time to think on it and sleep on it. You know, some of y'all got to think on it, sleep on it, dream on it, pray on it, lay on it, plan on it. Some people just can't make decisions. They gotta go through a whole process before they can. Today, Aquarius, that needs to be you. Ah, no, you wasn't expecting that, but it needs to be you today. Keep your thoughts to yourself at home. All right, last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces. Exhaustion will lead to minor injury if you don't know when to quit. Added knowledge will give you the edge when dealing with your peers. You may find that someone you live with is not too happy, but you can't really do anything about that right now. All right, look, fish, I don't know what's going on at your house, but if that person's not too happy, here's the thing, you can't make them happy. That's something for, you can't make people happy. People have to make themselves happy, right? So there's nothing you can do about that right now. You can offer some advice, maybe, you know, give some suggestions, but at, at the, for real, for real, it's up to that person to make themselves happy. Sometimes people, people will go unhappy because they feel like if I'm happy, then I have to hurt somebody else. Well, what's important, your happiness? If your happiness is gonna hurt somebody else, is that making you happy? I'm just saying. So fish, I don't know who it is, but that's what they're dealing with. In the meantime, exhaustion will lead to minor injury if you don't know when to quit. Listen, I, I'm guilty. I got my hand raised. Y'all can't see me, but I'm guilty. I got, I was in the bed last night, again. I literally got out the bed cuz it was something I forgot to do. And I got out the bed and I came in the office to do it. So I'm guilty when it comes to that, um, not knowing when to quit. I get it. But sometimes my body just say shut down and I have to go. All right, that's all the horoscopes I got for you today. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Notre Astral and Michael Thasson. Now let's get on to some news you can use. Well, 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 two medical cannabis dispensaries are open for business in Georgia, just days after the state agency in charge of the state's medical marijuana program issued the first five dispensary license. Listen, they were not playing. They were like, we got the, listen, they were sitting, they were sitting on standby. Yeah. So True, um, True Leaf, True Leaf Georgia held, uh, held grant openings on Fridays for dispensaries in Macon and Marietta. The two facilities will be open from ten AM to seven PM, seven days a week. Today is a new beginning for over twenty-seven thousand registered medical patients in Georgia, True Leaf CEO Kim Rivers said. True Leaf is equally thrilled and humbled to bring the first two medical cannabis dispensaries in the state, serving both Macon and Marietta communities in their health and wellness journey. Yeah, so True Leaf is, is a, True Leaf and a second company Botanical Science LLC. They were awarded medical cannabis manufacturing license last year in September, but you know, they had a hiccup, so it was kinda like they were going back and forth. But anyway, um, they were, they were, uh, awarded these licenses to grow marijuana up to a hundred thousand square feet of indoor space and convert the leafy green crop into low THC oil for patients suffering from various diseases. So, um, now patients can actually go and get the, go get the medical marijuana from the dispensaries. Now, here's the thing, it's in Macon and Marietta. I don't know, are they gonna have like some kinda, I doubt it though. It's probably like a pharmacy. Um, because now I'm trying to figure out, are they gonna have like, um, uh, you know how you get your medicine in the mail? I forgot what you call it, but I wonder if they're gonna be able to do stuff like that, you know? I guess so. If they got a prescription, you know, um, you can get your meds in the mail. I don't know if they're saying, I'm just asking a question. I'm just wondering about that. Anyway, the two companies have been working to ramp up production at plants in Adele and Glenville respectively, so they got two plants they're working on. Um, so I'm sure, I think, I think some other, some other licenses were issued as well, so we probably gonna have some other places that are going to, um, yeah. Anyway, True Leaf has announced plans to open additional dispensaries, one in Columbus, Georgia, Noonan, Georgia, and Pooler. Yeah, a notice on Botanical Science say indicates locations, um, of dispensary soon. They're gonna put theirs out, so they haven't put theirs out yet. In addition, the two Class One manufacturing licenses the Georgia Access to Medical Cannabis Commission has awarded to True Leaf and Botanical Science. The agencies have tentatively awarded four class licenses, Class Two licenses allow other manufacturers to grow indoor plants up to fifty thousand square feet. So these licenses are being held up by lawsuits filed by, um, losing bidders alleged that the selection process was flawed. So that has been one of the problems. Anyway, um, anything, the, the one thing about cannabis, they say the cannibal, cannabis oil is, is needed for people to feel better. Um, cancer is, is used for cancers, seizure disorders, AIDS, Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, sickle cell, um, autism and Alzheimer's. So it, it supposedly does a lot for a lot of people. Um, so hopefully, you know, the people get the help they need. So that's a, that's a plus. They're up, open and ready to go, so that's a plus. Can't even front that that's not a plus. It's a plus. I know some people saying it's not. So listen, Georgia was trying to grow its music industry, but that has fizzled. Like, I thought it was, I thought it was great. So anyway, apparently, we're missing out on billions of billions of dollars because we don't have a strong music industry like we have a film and entertainment industry. Some of the lawmakers are saying that the music fall under, under film and entertainment, but music said we need our own separate divisions. So they were trying to work on a bill to give a tax credit to, to, to the music industry professionals, so we can build our music industry. Right now, that has fizzled. We don't know what's gonna happen with that. They say we're gonna, we're gonna circle back around to that later. They got a lot going on. They got some reviews going on. And so they said they're gonna circle back around. You know, our film industry is the bomb and we're doing really good things. Now they want the music industry to be the same, kinda like Nashville. You know, you go to Nashville, baby. You, listen, it's country music all day long and twice on Sunday. They got it going on when it comes to the music industry. They got that thing nailed down. That's what they're saying we can do here in Georgia. However, we need to have these bills passed, but right now they are running into roadblocks, so that's not gonna happen anytime soon. So anyway, we'll see how that all plans out, folds out, uh, play out. I said plan out. We'll see how that all play out, um, and see what happens after that. All right, I'm gonna go to another song. Wait, well, let me just say this before I go. I wanna give a shout out to two young men. Listen, the drafts, the draft, they had the drafts. And so shout out to, um, shout out to, uh, Robert Bill Jr. He went to the San Francisco Forty-Niners. He was from Norcross High School. Shout out to you, baby. Much success on your journey to foot, journey in football. I love, ooh, I like that title, Audrey. Journey in football. Um, shout out to you for doing great things. He's on his way to be a, uh, San Francisco Forty-Niner, baby, so straight out of Norcross, yes. Also, shout out to Joe Ferguson, who played his senior year at Norcross as well. He went to the Seattle Seahawks as an undrafted rookie and free agent after the NFL draft, so shout out to you. Do great things, baby. They'll put you on the roster and keep you there. Do your thing. You got there, now you gotta stay there. So congratulations to both young men. Listen, you can't become an NFL player without putting in a lot of hard work. You know what I'm saying? You have to put in, you have to know your game. You have to be good at your game. You have to be extremely disciplined. You don't get to these, these levels of success by just being mediocre. It doesn't happen. So shout out to both of these young men who I'm sure have put in the work. Now they're in the NFL about to do their thing to show us, show us, and show us, show us what, how to do it and also make us very proud here in Gwinnett County. So shout out to, to both young men. All right, all right. I'm going to a song. I'll be right back after the song to bring you more of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County, so stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney bringing you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. So looks like the Gwinnett School Board may split the health and sex ed curriculum. Y'all know they've been, they've been, um, at odds about this curriculum with the sex education part of it. So right now, it looks like they So right now, it looks like they may split it. Gwinnett County Public Schools may go with two different vendors for its health and sex education curriculum, school board members indicated on Thursday. District staff provided, uh, board members with four options for Gwinnett, uh, County Public Schools Health and Sex Ed Curriculum. Include two that call for splitting the sex education curriculum from the health curriculum and using two different vendors. The sex ed curriculum in particular has been a topic of debate for months. So it's been a topic of debates and now they're, they're thinking about, um, splitting it up. So here are the four options. The four options put before the board members on Thursday were these. Go ahead and adopt the HealthSmart curriculum as a currently proposed curriculum. That's, that was one, one option. The second option was start the entire process review from scratch. That was another option. The third option was use HealthSmart for the health curriculum only and conduct a review to find a sex ed curriculum. So that, that's where the problem comes in at. The problem comes in with the sex ed. And the fourth option was use a HealthSmart for health curriculum and the latest version of the current sex ed curriculum, choosing the best. Right? So those are the options. So anyway, they are still up in the air trying to figure out what to do with that. Um, I mean, right now, and it, parents had a fit about the sex ed curriculum. They thought it was being too, it was telling the kids too much. But here's my thing, right? And I'm not telling people do that, kids, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there. These kids are exposed to the internet every day, twenty-four seven. You must know that they can pretty much see anything on the internet, anything. If they have a phone, they can see anything on the internet. So don't you think you need to teach them? Before they go out there? I'm just saying, I'm just saying. So anyway, they are, they're trying to figure it all out, you know, um, what they're gonna do about that. A majority of the board opted to lean in favor of the third option. So the third option was use HealthSmart for a health curriculum only and conduct a review to find a sex ed curriculum. So the majority, that was the majority, and they still have to vote on it. Um, yeah, they still have to vote on it. So to read the full story, go to Gwinnett Daily Post, it's all there, right there for you. So if you got something that you wanna talk about it, is, and read about it, it's all right there. Alright, next level, miniature golf complex now open near Mall of Georgia. Yes, 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 yes. Um, with the promise to take miniature golf to the next level, Putt Nation is the latest addition to the entertainment scene in Beaufort. So Mall of Georgia, old Nana area, you know, they got Top Golf down there. Now that, but this is a putting thing. Um, they got Top Golf, now they got Putt Nation. Putt Nation is there too. Um, it's now open at nineteen ninety-five Mall of Georgia Boulevard with one of, one of a kind miniature golf course and restaurant combos. You know what? I'm sitting here thinking now, we, I might have to tell the ladies, we might have to meet up for one of our Wednesdays at Putt Nation or Top Golf. I gotta check that out. So the, the women of GWC, we do our timeout Wednesdays. And, um, I'm thinking this may be an option right here, Putt Nation or Top Golf. I'm thinking about that. That may be a great, great option. Anyway, um, Putt Nation, uh, with one of a kind miniature golf course and a restaurant combo offering unique experience for putters of all ages. Uh, we wanted to create a space where people could have fun, unwind and create memories with their families and friends. And Putt Nation owner Abraham Gray said it, he said it in the news, in the news release. So now we got a new Putt Nation for miniature golf downtown, down by the Mall of Georgia, nineteen ninety-five Mall of Georgia, Mall of Georgia Boulevard. I've never been on a putt putt date. I've never done that. That sounds amazing. Anyway, Putt Nation is open from eleven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Thursday, and from eleven AM to one AM, Saturday and Sunday. So now open on Fridays? What's up with Friday? It says Monday through Thursday, eleven to eleven, and eleven to one, Saturday and Sunday. What happened to Friday? Are they closed on Fridays? That wouldn't make sense. I'm, I'm a someone that was misraped. Anyway, if you wanna know more information about Putt Nation, go to putt nation dot com. That's P U T T putt nation dot com. And to find out more information, I need to check that out. It looks pretty cool. Look like it's indoor too. I think that's a great date night. I do. Alright, the city commission meeting is happening this week, this, today, this evening in Beaufort. Yep, that's happening this, this evening in Beaufort. So if you wanna go check that out, seven PM this evening, um, you know, they have their meetings, the commission meeting will meet in Beaufort City Hall. Twenty-three oh, twenty-three hundred Beaufort Highway at seven PM this evening. If the agenda is on their website, the city abuse, Beaufort website, so if you wanna see the city agenda. But today is there in a PDF, you can check it out there. So if you want to attend, attend the meeting, this evening in Beaufort, city commission meeting at seven PM. Bingo Fun Night, that's the wrong place. Anyway, if you like bingo, it's going down in Gainesville. I don't know how this got in my news feed, but anyway, if you like bingo, the American Legion twenty-three forty-three Riverside Drive in Gainesville, it's a little bit of a hike. So you gotta really love bingo for that. If you're somewhere close by and you're listening to me, you wanna go to bingo tonight. Um, ten dollar, ten dollar includes, uh, eight games of bingo and dinner for one person. Okay, that's not bad. That's not bad at all. It's a nonprofit organization that serves adults with disabilities, so um, some kind of way I'm, I was supposed to announce that, it ended up in my news feed. I don't know who for, but I hope you got it. Bingo tonight at the American Legion, ten dollars include eight games of bingo and dinner for one. That's really cool. That's really, really cheap too. Um, I've been to bingo here in Georgia, and man, my husband's been like twenty dollars just on the boards, twenty dollars each, not ten, twenty dollars each for the bingo boards. And we have to buy a hot dog separately. So I'm just saying. But anyway, this is sponsored by Randy and Friends, a nonprofit organization that serves adults with disability. So I was supposed to announce that for some reason, so they have it. I don't know what the reason is. Alright, Rest in Mind Customer Service Reimagine. Listen, if you have a restaurant and you wanna know how to do customer service, the, uh, UGA SBDC is having a training. It's thirty-nine dollars. It's a webinar. You can go on there and watch it. It's virtually, so you don't have to leave your house. But here's what you wanna know. If you are in the restaurant business, this is what you are gonna learn. How to, how successful restaurants are excelling in customer service. The importance of differentiating between service and hospitality, successful strategies for customer service, and how to deliver what customers truly want. If you are in the restaurant business, you probably wanna take this class. It's happening this Wednesday, I'm telling you ahead of time, so you'll be able to get to the class. It's virtual, so you don't have to leave. You can do it on your phone, you can do it on your computer. It's virtual. It's, um, ten AM to eleven thirty AM. And this is gonna help you run your restaurant better. Anyway, for more information, you can call six seven eight nine eight five six eight two zero. Again, that number is six seven eight nine eight five six eight two zero. Six seven eight nine eight five six eight two zero, or you can register online at UGA S B D C dot training. U G A S B D C dot training. U G A S B D C dot training. If you know somebody in the restaurant business who may be able to benefit from this training, be sure to, um, be sure to let them know. Alright, listen, if you wanna know how to make cocktails, they got cocktails, a cocktail class coming up on the third. Doble, Doble Tequila got a class coming up. Alright, this is gonna be downtown. Now this is, this is my place, y'all. This is my place. Y'all know I love social. Social got the best food, but it has a wonderful atmosphere. But anyway, um, as we roll into Cinco de Mayo, you know, that's that, that's Friday, it's going down, baby. Um, as we roll into Cinco de Mayo, join us for an exclusive educational cocktail class hosted by Cosmos Social Bartender Shiloh. Shiloh is, let me tell you something. I love Alicia and her team. Alicia don't let no grasp. So Alicia is the owner of Cosmos Pizza and Social Downtown, downtown Lawrenceville. They keep stuff on the calendar. You will always find something on the calendar to happen there. And I'm always talking about it. Know why? Because that's our partner. So that's Cosmos is a, is a partner for the Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce. We do our first Fridays there. We'll be there this Friday, Cinco de Mayo. It's probably gonna be going down. Probably gonna have a great time, um, Friday because it is Cinco de Mayo. But anyway, if you wanna take this class, it's happening Wednesday at six thirty. So if you wanna know how to make a great cocktail, like, you know, using Doble Tequila, now listen. I don't know how smooth Doble is. I know Patron is smooth. It sneaks up on you. So if you're gonna make the cocktail, you're probably gonna have to drink it. Don't mess up, so you have to keep drinking more than one, cuz we want you to be, you know, be, you gotta leave the place, so we want you to be able to drive and do all of those things. Anyway, if you wanna take the classes, this, this coming, um, this coming Wednesday at six thirty, Cosmos Pizza and Social located at one forty-four East Krogan Street, downtown Lawrenceville. The classes will defeat you, will feature guided instruction on how to create some of the favorite tequila based, uh, cocktails using Doble Tequila. Say we'll focus on the history and the different varieties of Doble, 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 uh, Tequila. Why you enjoy a small place and bites from Cosmos Italian Kitchen. I love Cosmos. It's my, one of my favorite places. That's, listen, we call that our, um, that's our like, that's our night out. I mean, that's our, that's our nightlife place, Cosmos. Cuz we ain't really got one. It is what it is. Alright, Cinco de Mayo, I just said it, Cinco de Mayo is going down at Cosmos on Friday. Join us too. The Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce will be in the house Friday at six PM. It's our first Friday event. I'm looking, I'm looking forward to having a good time. But anyway, Cinco de Mayo starts at eleven o'clock at Cosmos. Live music, food specials, drink specials, games and prizes. I know it's going down, so I'm, I'm looking forward to being in the house on Friday. And so we gonna roll into Cinco de Mayo. You gonna have a whole lot going on. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good time. So that's gonna be Friday, Cinco de Mayo. All day long, they gonna celebrate. And we gonna be in the house Friday night. It's Cinco de Mayo. I might have to even find me something to put on that look Mexican. I wanna, I might have on red, green and, and yellow. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, yeah, it's going down. So again, that's gonna be this coming Friday. Um, it starts at, kicks off at eleven o'clock, so they're gonna be celebrating all day at Cosmos. I'm sure downtown Lawrenceville gonna be popping Friday. First of all, it's Friday night. That's the first thing. Second of all, it's Cinco de Mayo. So, and I hope the weather is beautiful, cuz if the weather is beautiful and it's Cinco de Mayo and it's Friday night, it's gonna be a popping good time. We'll be in the house. Join us. Listen, for more information about the Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce, go to gwinnettwomen'schamber dot com. We have a lot of events, y'all. And it's open to everybody. We got one event, we got two events that's completely closed to just our members. We got one that's closed, closed, closed completely to just our members. That's our mentoring program. That's closed. You gotta be a member to be a part of that. And that membership, that mentoring session is for, for businesses who are looking to become investable, which means you're looking for, um, either a private equity, um, investor, venture capital, or raising money for your venture. That's just for our members. Then we have our timeout Wednesday, which is the second Wednesday of the month. That's just for the ladies, just for the ladies. All the other events, men and, men and, men and friends are welcome. Some events are paid, some events are free. For the paid events, if you are not a member, you just have to pay our non-member price. For our members, they pay member price. And for open events like Friday at Cinco de Mayo, it's going down. It's just a mixer, us having a good time with one of our partner, um, uh, Cosmos Pizza and Social. So come out, it's this Friday at six PM. We're gonna be in the house having a good time. I'm sure it's gonna be a lot of fun. I pray the weather is nice, because if it's nice, we gonna have a ball. Alright, Cinco de Mayo is coming. Y'all know we like to get down. We like to get down. Oh, I feel like I said a lot. Okay, that's all I got for y'all today. I'm going to go to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and give you my words of inspir- inspiration before I go. So stay tuned, I'll be right back after the song. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for you today. But before I go, I wanna give you my words of inspiration. And here goes, it says, um, people try things because they just won't, they just don't want it enough. Let me say that again. People try things because they just don't want it enough. Cuz here's the thing, you can try or you can do. If you want it enough, you're gonna do it. If you don't want it enough, you're gonna try, right? So people try things just because they don't want it enough. And I know some people like, well, I tried, yeah, but you, could you do it? Cuz here's the other thing too, and I'm, and I'm, I'm guilty of this. When I don't wanna do something, I'm gonna try to do it. Let me say that again. When I really don't care about doing something, I'm gonna try. When I really wanna do something, I'm gonna do it. You hear people say people spend money on what they wanna spend money on. People go do things that they wanna do. When they don't wanna do something, they gonna try to do it. When they wanna do it, they just do it. They find a way. They find a way when it looks like there is no way. Know why? Because they wanna do it. Just that bad. I've been in a situation like that where I wanted something just that bad. Oh, I figured out how to do it. But when I really didn't care about it as much, I'm, I'm gonna try. I'm gonna try to do it. I'm gonna try to make it. I'm gonna try. Now here's the thing, if I really wanted to go, I would make it. Think about that for a second. If you really, really want, and when people say I'm gonna try to make it, that means they really don't want it. They really don't wanna come, they really don't wanna go, they really don't wanna do it because they gotta try. But when you wanna do something, you figure out how to get it done. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Listen, that's all I got for you today. What you gonna do? You gonna try, you gonna do today? That's all I got for you. Um, you could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last forty-seven minutes with me, and I love and appreciate you for that. If you miss any episodes of the show, be sure to go to goodmorninggwinnett dot com to listen to past episodes there. Also, also connect with me on Facebook and Instagram, at Good Morning Gwinnett. Alright? We got great events coming up, so I would like to invite you to become a member of the great, the Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce. You, even if you don't live in Georgia, the state of Georgia or the county of Gwinnett, we invite you to become a member of our family because we do eight, eight virtual events a month online where you can attend from anywhere in the world, as long as you're a member. So if you wanna become a member, if you wanna be a part of a community that focuses on the whole woman, not just some parts of her, the entire woman, the health, the wellness, the business, all of that, relationships. We folk, this chamber is different. We focus on the whole woman. So we invite you to join us. You can do that by going to gwinnettwomen'schamber dot com, gwinnettwomen'schamber dot com. Gwinnett Women's Chamber dot com. We'd love to have you. Alright, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM. You guys stay, safe out there. And until next time, my friend, until next time, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noise media dot US.